Well, I called or ordered the Thursday, October 24th, 2019 meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sircina.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
Councilmember Judkins.
Here.
Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Good evening, everybody. Nice to have you with us. It's always good to have a full council chambers, particularly when we're celebrating great things like saving lives and doing great things in our community. So, nice to see everybody here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. The next item is citizens' presentation. Now, this is where anybody in the chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here to do that? Seeing none, we're going to move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Item passes five to zero. Okay, now, we have a couple of presentations. The first presentation we have is the introduction of the Waukees School Superintendent, Dr. Brad Buck. Brad, please come forward. Welcome, nice to have you here.
Thank you, it's great to be here.
Just, please, just share with the council a little bit about yourself and your background and, you know, back in Waukees now and good to have you here, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, this story begins 50 years ago. I'm not going to do that to you. So, it does begin 18 years ago. So, 18 years ago, I had the honor of being appointed as the middle school principal at Waukees Middle School. So, I was middle school principal in Waukees for a couple of years, then my boss, Dave Wolkerson, he came to me and he had an opportunity for me. I don't know if any of you have ever had that experience where someone comes to you and presents an opportunity? So, I was presented an opportunity. It did actually end up being a really, really pretty amazing thing. So, I had the opportunity to shepherd the process from going to, from a 6-8 middle school and a 9-12 high school to a 6-7 middle school, an 8-9 building that is Prairie View School, and then our 10-12 high school. So, that process happened 16 or so years ago and I had a chance to be a part of leading and doing that. Following that, so I had both buildings as principal for two years and then each of the assistants moved into the principal role. Then I was associate superintendent for five years and I had been talking to Dr. Wolkerson about potentially becoming superintendent someday and he kept saying, "Just five more years, Brad, and I'm going to retire, just five more years." And after about the third year of five years, I said, "Dave, that's not really how math works. We need you to maybe consider a lower number at some point." So, I say that somewhat jokingly. So, from there, I went to Saydell as superintendent. You're familiar with Saydell, of course, in this area. Then I was the director of the Iowa Department of Education, so I was an appointee by then-Governor Branstad. I did that a couple of years and then, most recently, I've been superintendent of schools in Cedar Rapids. So, excited to be back in Waukees. I started July 1st and the running joke is, "I started July 1st and I'm in my 11th year." So, it's exciting to be back. As you know, Waukees schools and all the municipalities we serve are exciting, vibrant places, growing and lots of good things underway. I do want to thank Mayor Sircina and City Manager McQuillan. I wasn't on the job very long and they reached out to me and said, "Could we just grab a cup of coffee, talk a little bit about the exciting things that are underway in the city of Clive, give me an opportunity just to get to know them a little bit and maybe talk a little bit about where things are headed for the school district?" So, appreciated that time together and I was especially impressed by the strategic planning work in which all of you are engaged and have been engaged. It's a pretty impressive document and it gives us some clarity on where's the city of Clive is headed over time. With that, I can give you a couple of quick updates. There's probably a more important footnote to all of this. Schuler Elementary is, of course, the elementary that's situated in Clive and one of the things that often comes up in that relationship is just the great relationship that we have with the police force with Clive. That comes up frequently and I'm sure it's true of other city services that are engaged with Clive. The other thing, and this is the probably additional important footnote, my wife was the school secretary at Schuler for a couple of years before we moved, so she is the more famous of the bucks at Schuler Elementary. So, I don't know, beyond that, if you'd like some updates about what's happening with enrollment or school growth and a little bit of that? Okay, so, this is kind of a fun one contextually. So, 18 years ago, when I was middle school principal, there were 2,850 students in Waukees Schools. This year, we will be serving just over 11,550. So, in 18 years, we've grown kind of at that pace, about 500 students a year. Of course, we're putting up new schools all the time, so this year, we opened Radiant Elementary. It's up in Urbandale off of, let's see, Alice's Road, 170th or Grand Prairie Parkway, depending on how you think about all of that. We do have a new high school opening. The second high school is set to open in the fall of 2021. That work is well underway. Last I knew, they expect we'll have about 75% of that building enclosed for work this winter, but if you ever get out that direction, it's, you can almost see it improving weekly. Then also, we have in what is Waukees, the original Waukees Elementary is a three-story structure that was renovated, I suppose, six or eight years ago. It's now called the Binsmeyer Learning Center. We are putting 20 classrooms on that facility that will be preschool space, so that's set to open in the fall of 2021. And then our 10th Elementary is set to open in the fall of 2022. It is not yet named. I'm sure that will be a process and it is out on Ashworth, so if you were to go out on Ashworth, about as far as you can get out in Waukees, that's where that 10th Elementary will be. So, that's maybe a little bit of helpful context for where we are with enrollment in schools going forward, so.
So, Brad, this is all really exciting. You know, the district could grow ad infinitum, really, in our lifetimes, could it not?
Oh, absolutely. It's interesting. So, one of the things about which we're especially proud is our Apex programming and so we have relationships with 600 business, nonprofit and not-for-profit partners. Our kids get some really amazing, authentic project-style experiences. We had an Apex Advisory Board meeting this morning and, of course, there's growth in Clive, there's growth in West Des Moines, there's growth in Urbandale. The Waukees presentation this morning, they're anticipating growth for the next, yeah, 30 or 40 years, so, yeah, stay tuned on all that.
Lot more to come. Council questions or comments for Superintendent Buck? Eric, please.
Dr. Buck, thanks again for coming to visit with us. Certainly appreciate the interaction and, you know, for a long time, we've had superintendents come just to kind of give us an update and I think that type of collaboration really helps to make things go and really helps to keep us in the same sheet of music. I would be remiss if I didn't have the opportunity to ask you, in the last year or so, the Waukees School District has spent $2.16 million to settle three different lawsuits. What's your thoughts on that? Are we done with this? Have we put this behind us? Do we have, you probably can't comment on pending litigation, but where are we with this and how we move forward?
Yes, so, that is the three of the three lawsuits that was settled a week or so ago and I would say we are at a juncture where we believe this is complete now and behind us. A part of that process was a report that came out from the State Auditor's Office. In response to that audit report, the board members did put in place some additional policies to put a backstop in there about some of the concerns that maybe came to light through the entirety of this process. One of the things I would tell you is this, as I get out and talk to staff members and families, there's a certain, and I'm saying this respectfully, there's a certain sort of weariness around that part of it and I think people are ready to acknowledge that this is coming to enclose and ready to move on. So, the other thing I would also keep in mind is, we have amazing staff members and amazing families in Waukees Community Schools and even through all of these difficult times, they, they kept at the really amazing, well, can I give you just an example of my Wednesday last week, just to contextualize this? So, Wednesday of last week, the final lawsuit is approved by the board. That, that news happens like it does, but here's what my Wednesday looked like in Waukees Schools. That morning, I started my day at Prairie View School. One of the teachers there was acknowledged with an award that one in five teachers in the country receive annually. This is like, super big deal award, so I started there. Then I went over to Brookview and we had a, an African drummer in residence onsite, so I got to spend time doing that, so kids got this really cool experience drumming. I got there a few minutes late and I learned a valuable lesson about how you're treated if you get in late with an African drummer in residence. I was, I got some significant coaching. I didn't know how she knew which hand was my strong hand. She kept saying, "You're doing it like that." I'm like, "How do you even know it's just my strong hand?" Anyway, then, from there, I went to Schuler and I had a chance to serve meals to our kindergarten kids and their families and our second grade kids and their families and it was just, kids are always polite, respectful, families well, well-integrated in the types of things we do. And then we went to the conversation about consideration for approval of that final lawsuit. So, that day was a contextualizing day for me about the amazing things that are underway in Waukees Schools and at the same time recognizing we need to finish out this process.
I certainly appreciate your comments there and hope we can move forward with this. I know there's many of us that live in the Waukees School District that have found these stories very troubling and concerning and hopefully we can put these behind us.
Yeah, I agree.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Buck, council? Well, Brad, thank you so much for being here. I guess you didn't realize that one of the qualifiers to coming into this role is you had to be a commercial developer.
Yeah, there is definitely a part of that.
Appreciate your great work and welcome, but we look forward to working with you.
Hey, and thank you. And please know this, anytime if it's helpful for me to come back and describe where we are, give you updates on things, I'm always happy to do that. So, appreciate the partnership and thanks.
Love to have you. Thank you very much, Dr. Buck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our second presentation and these are life-saving award presentations. Chief Rowland.
It's always an honor, Mayor, a pretty special event to, to share the stories behind these. The first one I want to tell you about happened on July 8th. It happened at the Mercy One Healthy Living Center here in Clive. A patron was exercising on the treadmill when he collapsed. The event was witnessed by several staff and bystanders. One bystander brought an AED while a staff member initiated CPR prior to the initial 911 call. The AED advised a shock, one shock was administered, followed by a few more minutes of CPR. Upon the arrival of EMS, the patient was breathing on their own. He was not waking up immediately, so he was sedated and intubated for transport to Mercy Following three days of care, he was discharged home on July 11th, just three days after, after the event. So, I'd like, at this point, I would like to invite up the folks that are receiving awards. Brett Bosworth, I'm sure he's with us tonight. Larry Duskin. I'll just kind of set you over here. Lisa, I want to pronounce it right. Heck.
Yep.
And Loretta Elliott. She's here tonight. She's not here, but. We also have a special guest with us tonight, Jeff Austin, and Jeff has asked if he could say a few words before we present the awards, so. Jeff, come on up.
Thank you very much. Well, I, first, I guess I would start off by saying I'm very pleased to be here tonight. Definitely, my story is being in the right place at the right time, but I just wanted to take a minute to obviously thank Lisa and Larry. I'm incredibly, you know, grateful, thankful, and also to you all, I mean, the service that was there. I think the EMS folks were there in like four minutes and so I, once I fell, I wasn't really conscious for most of the, of the event, but I just, I can't tell you how thankful I am and appreciate being in the right, in the right place at the right time. So, thank you very much and thank you again.
Welcome, thank you.
We have a tradition, we invite the mayor down to help present the awards. Would you like to help the mayor do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
On the, on the awards that you get, anytime we give out a life-saving award, we have the date of the event inscribed on the back, so, a few years, you'll have good stories On our, our second award, this happened on August 8th. It happened up around 70th and Airline in Urbandale as part of our closest unit response. There was a patient that suffered a witness cardiac arrest while he was driving his truck northbound on 70th Street in Urbandale. The truck coasted to a stop against the curb and bystanders quickly removed him, laid him on the ground and initiated CPR. Urbandale police officers arrived, continued CPR and utilized an AED to deliver two shocks prior to arrival of the Clive EMS units. Clive EMS personnel continued CPR and delivered one additional shock. After moving the patient to the ambulance, the patient had regained a pulse and was breathing with some assistance. Additional care included innovation of the airway, assistance with breathing, establishing an IV and administering drugs appropriate for cardiac care and sedation. The patient was transported to Iowa Methodist Medical Center and eventually released in, in very good condition. So, if I could invite up Jeremy Anis, Dustin Dickout, Kyle Dykstra, Lindy is unfortunately sick, Colby Martin, and Chris Petrick is actually teaching a paramedic class this evening. You know, one of the things, we do these life-saving awards and sometimes they seem simple in that, you know, we just kind of read the brief story, but behind the scenes, there's a ton of training that these guys do. Dustin's a paramedic instructor and these guys work hard all the time. Mayor, if I could, I do want to point out on the closest unit response events where there's a life, life saved involved, how we split these up is in this example where there are bystanders to be recognized, police officers from Urbandale to be recognized and I believe there may have been a Westcom dispatcher recognized as well. Whatever city that happened in is taking care of those recognitions, so I didn't want anybody to think that those folks were left out, they're getting the recognition they deserve.
Thanks, Chief, very much. Appreciate your great work and we appreciate the recognition and the wonderful work of our first responders. Boy, it makes us all proud sitting up here, if I could speak for this group.
Good stuff.
So, thank you very much, again. Okay, we're going to move to some business items now, action items. The first item is a resolution approving the Clive 2019-2025 Strategic Plan. Matt?
Thank you, your honor. Following our work, all of this team's work around the table and as well as the management team, this is the formal update to the strategic plan that lays out the action items for the next 12 months. I know I've been sharing that previously with the council, but this is the formal update now that we've gotten all the documentation back from, from our facilitator, Lyle Summick, and we would encourage your approval of this update.
Thank you, Matt. Council questions for Matt?
Move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Item passes five to zero, understanding I'm preaching to the choir here a little bit, but this is a great plan and, you know, we all, at this table and with our staff and with our leadership, work really hard to put this together and to work on it every year. You know, we all spend a great amount of time and put a lot of effort and thought into this. It makes us better and I think it blesses us, so, I appreciate the council and our department heads for their great work. So, Matt, thank you. Okay, item number two is a resolution approving the professional services agreement with RDG Planning and Design Northwest Parks Concept Planning for $45,500. Todd?
Good evening, good to see everyone. This is a recommendation for consultant services for the conceptual design for Schuler Park Pond, Shadow Creek Greenway and Alice's Road Park. As I outlined in the memo, we had four submittals. We chose two to bring in-house and interview and after talking to the two teams, felt RDG brought the best mix of people to the project and felt we'd be getting a really good value for a dollar. Just a reminder, the Alice's Road Park project has that housing component in it, which is a little different, something I've never done before. Good thing Doug's involved. And then, again, this was a strategic plan priority that was on the list to get done this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Council questions?
Todd, real quick, could you just give me a quick summary of each, each project? The Schuler Park Pond, so just, just a quick summary of each project?
Sure. Kind of what we have envisioned for Schuler Park, it will be more of a passive park. There's a pond there, potentially a trail, some parking, a small shelter, possibly fiddle fit there, and then probably more, the biggest component will be the access to the water, whether it's a fishing pier or kayak ramp or whatever. The Shadow Creek Greenway is a trail connection with some stormwater components to it over just north of Epcun Project, I believe. And then, lastly, Alice's Road Park is that 20 acres that we own along the west side of Alice's Road, up north of the Greenway that we've already acquired, so that'll have park components and then this housing component too.
Thank you.
Yep?
Other questions for Todd?
I'll be abstaining, Your Honor.
Move the resolution?
Second.
It's moved by Michael, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
A fishing pond will be?
Item passes four to zero with one abstention.
Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, item three is a resolution approving professional services agreement with Interflue Incorporated with the Greenbelt Stream Corridor Assessment for $79,300. And Rachel?
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. So, as we discussed in July, July 25th, we talked about putting this RFQ out for the stream bank assessment. It's a continuation of work we've done in the past, 2009, 2014. We received five submittals for that. We kind of scored that and picked the top two to interview and then decided to select Interflue, Interflue, excuse me. They're, they're a great firm, they have a lot of experience in this area and, yeah, we're just really excited to get the project started.
Questions for Rachel, counsel?
Move the resolution.
Mayor, real quick.
Why don't we, let's, we've got a motion. Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion, Eric?
Real quick, what, what a type of, what's a little bit of the scope of the project and what type of, what will they be delivering? What are you guys looking for as far as the deliverables?
Okay, so, it'll be a report similar to the previous assessments for the bulk of the Greenbelt and that's going to be mainly looking at bank stability, looking at our assets, our infrastructure and kind of focusing where we need to protect that and, and do stream bank stabilization. And then the second component, that's kind of an add-on, is looking in more detail at Little Walnut Creek in our new neighborhood and then near the Greenbelt Landing area and from that, we'll get a little more detailed assessment of the, of the whole stream corridor and then we'll look at, we'll get some conceptual designs essentially that we can then take and potentially do in-house to, to do that work and protect our assets.
Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. McQuillan?
With that fee and all, how does that tie into the, the, oh, the water, what's it called?
Water trails.
Yeah, water trails project. If you know what they're looking at doing and some of that study, on top of this study, I don't think it has anything to do with water trails.
It doesn't have any necessarily direct relation to water trails, more what the focus is, is it actually has more of a direct connection to the, one of the Greenbelt Triad projects. So, one of the portions of the, of the Greenbelt Landing project is to stabilize the stream bank all the way through that area north and so what this additional study work will give us is basically a concept design that our staff can go off of, because as a part of that project, one thing that we've proposed, and we'll talk about this quite a bit here in two weeks, is having our staff in-house do the stormwater components of those projects, at least the stream bank stabilization components. And so, what we're hoping is, and why we added the additional scope work here, is to then give us something firm to go off of so our staff can go in and use the equipment that we have to do at least a portion of the work. And then also, we know with the bridge project out west with West Gate, we wanted to do something similar for that area where we do have access and we can start to pick away at, at pieces of it. So, it's, it's not a full detailed design that you can necessarily bet out, but it gives us at least enough of a footing to be able to go out and do some of the work ourselves.
So, to further that, their discussion about how they interact with the water, I mean, that's the whole discussion, that water trails and the, you know, up in that area that we'll be looking at?
So, there'll be not as much in the Little Walnut Creek area because of the steeper ravines that we have, that we have to work through, but in the Greenbelt Landing area, definitely, there is a, one of the access points for the water trails plan that was identified is actually two, two spots, right there, Greenbelt Landing by the bridge where the grades will be down a little bit more and then also here actually in the City Hall parking lot, there's a small area identified where we actually have kayakers that have it, when the flows are a little bit higher in flooding season, will actually park in our back corner here and actually go in and so one thing we've talked about is actually formalizing that access. So, it's more just like inner tubes and kayaks, not as much zero-depth entry, if you will, in these locations.
Matt, it'll be interesting, as we, as we, this study comes out, we can prioritize some of the erosion projects that we have, some of the new equipment that we've invested in to see how we can do that in-house and take care of some of those key spots that are, are showing immediate concern.
That's exactly the idea.
There's a strong deliverable.
A giant excavator.
Yeah, good. Other questions for Rachel, what we have for, seeing none, will the council please vote? It's been moved and seconded. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is the Northwest Development Area Traffic Engineering Study. There's two items as a part of that. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Glad to be here as we finish up this long study that we've been working on in several aspects. We started off back in 217, 2017, identified street study and want a need to address our streets in the city. We followed it up with improving and changing our specifications. We followed, then the street study itself to look at what funding was necessary, also included. look at what funding was necessary. Also included, taking a look and creating a 10-year CIP. Part of that 2017 task was also to do engineering study of all the streets in the city. We kind of broke that up and whittled that down a little bit, and we talked several meetings over, taking that down to a few specific areas, that being Clark Street and 114th. And Clark Street, we were already under design with some construction there. Followed that up with 114th Street that we'll be bringing back to you shortly. The last area in all that work that we identified was the Northwest Development Area, and we've been working with Urbendale and Waquis, along with HR Green to develop a scope for that area, primarily of interest to us, but also have some interest with them, and they are participating in different ways in this study. So, that brings us to this last point and opportunity to move forward with the study for the Northwest Development Area. Take a look at those streets out there, Meredith, Alice's Road, Warrior Lane, and see what they're gonna look like at build-out and move forward with that.
Well, it's coming fast, and probably faster than most of us can really appreciate. As long as you gotta do is drive out there.
Yes.
Yeah, so, questions, counsel?
Move the resolution awarding issue HR Green?
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Move the resolution approving the MOU?
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing none of the council, please vote. That item passes five to zero. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we'll move to item five, which is approving a pay request number two for RDG Planning and Design for the West Gate Drive Bridge enhancements.
Move approval? Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you, Susan. Seeing no further discussion with the council, please vote. Item passes four to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, before we move to reports, I just, I want to recognize a friend of the City of Clive, Art Whitmax here, with the Central Iowa Taxpayers Association, or excuse me, the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa, excuse me. Art, nice to have you here. Did you want to come forward and say a few words to the council? I know we didn't plan on it, putting you on the spot, but being that you're here, you can feel free to come forward and just say hello.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
For the council. Pleasure to be here this evening. I found myself drinking from a fire hose, literally. Gretchen Tigler, who was our president for eight years, moved on to a new responsibility in healthcare and is doing a marvelous job. I do sense, however, she misses this type of opportunity. On behalf of the association, I thank you for your public service. You take time from your private lives, your families, professions, to serve the public, and for that, we have great gratitude. It's likely that there'll be issues on which we may separate on opinion, but hopefully, we will do so on a basis of fact. And Matt, I hope to work with you, staff to staff. Nothing's more irritating than to see people who work for months and years on a strategic plan, start to implement it, and then have taxpayers come before you and say, why didn't we know about this? The new Senate File 634 deals with tax transparency, and the legislature decided it was important to somehow control what they thought were increasing property tax burdens, increasing it at a level faster than our population, cost of living, and whatever it happened to be. There was a movement to try to limit that, as you well know, to 3%. Our association was against that, because what happens in this community, what happens in Des Moines, what happens in Greenfield are entirely different. So, it's gonna be important for us, as an association, to get taxpayers involved in the work sessions and the planning that you're doing. It's an 18-month process. We are starting what is called TACI in the Tavern. TACI, our Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa, is meeting once a month now at the Cub Club, trying to talk about various public issues in an environment that is non-confrontational, purely educational. And we started out with the first one dealing with environmental issues that the communities are facing, opportunities we have. The second one, we started through the process of starting with the assessment and ultimately working through the final budgets that municipalities and others approve. This next presentation, we started again with the assessments, the rollbacks, equalization. We started talking about the Transparency Act. Next one is gonna be dealing with city council budgets, municipalities. So, we hope to have a representative from Des Moines, the largest, obviously, from Johnston, dealing with growth, and you could have been included in that, and also a smaller municipality, that being Bondurant. Each, we think, will identify different issues that they look at individually. So, we look forward to that educational process and the continued communication with this council and with the city manager on those issues. Mr. Mayor, you gave me an opportunity, and as Councilman Edwards knows, I have a hard time passing those up.
Well, we appreciate it.
Questions?
Well, thanks for being here. I guess I would just say that, you know, in my time in this role and on the council before, I can think of very few times where we've really differed, really in principle, on just about any issue. Why is that? Because we've always communicated. We've always tried to approach issues based on what the facts are and not emotions, and, but to really just stick to the facts. And I think probably one of our collective challenges going forward is to help our residents understand who controls what aspect of which tax levy?
Yes.
Being levied. Who controls the property tax assessments? State code does, and the counties do.
Correct.
City controls its levy. 50% roughly of our taxes, at least in Dallas County, go to the school district. So, let's understand who's doing what and who's responsible for what. We get really proud about the fact that we have the lowest tax, city tax levy in the metro. And so, we get really excited about that. But when we start hearing reports about mixing roles, about one, you know, local option sales tax, and then assessments go through the roof, that's not us. So, we've got to be able to, I think we've got to together work to share those facts, and I know that we're doing that.
Right.
But that's our ongoing challenge as these kind of things continue. So, I would say that, that the association has been a friend of the City of Clive, and so, we appreciate that, that relationship. Let's build upon it. I think we go forward in that spirit, and things work out really well, for our residents especially. So, Art, thank you for being here. Questions for Mr. Whitmax, counsel, while he's here? Matt?
I would just add, Your Honor, that the City of Clive and the City of Urbendale received the, in the Public Interest Award from TACI earlier this year for our work on Station 43 and saving both Clive and Urbendale residents over $10 million over 20 years in terms of that collaboration on that fire station. So, we appreciate that.
Thank you, and congratulations on that, Matt.
Thank you.
Art, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I do have one thing I'd like to mention, and that is, when the Taxpayers Association is going to come out with a press release that may affect a municipality, I hope there's a chance to at least have a conversation about it, because one example where that happened was trying to compare agreements that were made in Altoona and West Des Moines for their various data centers. And the background was very different on those in terms of, one, having significant state involvement that forced the local government into a certain decision, and it was different with the other. And those are facts that are relevant
Yes.
To understand that it isn't necessarily apples to apples in every case. So, I think that contributes to some misunderstanding sometimes if all the facts aren't there. So, I would hope that, especially if there's ever something that would involve Clive, there's at least that attempt to find out the details about it first.
Councilwoman Junkins, I'd be pleased to meet with you on that. I need the education on that. I do want you to know that, that as a matter of policy, we choose not, we choose not to have our discussions in the press. If, if it continues, and, and it gets into the press, it's not by our doing.
Interesting.
And it's, we, we try very much to meet as we have with others and try to communicate. And as long as that communication is open both ways, we choose to, you know, to proceed in that, in that vein. But when that communication is no longer available, it doesn't give us any other choice than to try to find out what it, base our facts on what information is available. So, we've, we've remained silent as an association on some issues that have been in the press recently. You won't find the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa associated with those, and sometimes it spills over onto us. But as long as we can maintain communications, as, as the mayor has suggested, and handle those things without involving the larger community, that's our position. Now, with your specific issue, I would enjoy that opportunity to discuss it.
Sounds like you're having coffee pretty soon.
I didn't.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doors always open here, Art. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a good week. Okay, now, we're now gonna remove, move to reports here as we move down to the end of the agenda, and Pete, we're gonna start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item tonight. On the, on next Wednesday, October 30th, we are going to be cutting over to the new cityofclive.com. And as part of that transition, I wanted to just briefly prepare all of you for some of the things you might expect to see, especially in the first few days. First off, I welcome everybody to get in there and start clicking around and start putting together your punch list, and you can email those directly to me so that we can find the things that need to be corrected. Punch list is, I think, really the right way to say, to kind of frame this up. This is like building something as complex as a house or a major structure. When you reach this point, it's not like you're on Christmas Day opening up a package, and the package open inside, there's the toy that's perfectly done and ready to play with. It's more like when you first get into a house and you identify, all right, the big things are done, the big things are working well and correctly, but we still have the tune-up things that need to be done. This tune-up process, this punch list process, or you'll more frequently hear me call it the soft launch period, is going to last for a number of weeks. And we have staff throughout the departments at the City of Clive who have already put in tremendous, excellent work to get us to this point, and they will continue to do so through the soft launch period. So, visitors understand that that's the situation we're in. We'll have a little alert that is in the bottom corner of the front page for the city's homepage, and then the library homepage, and the parks homepage as well, just explaining where we're at, that we're continuing to make those improvements, and that we welcome their feedback on the new site as well. I'd ask you all-
Not as big as opening that present and finding out there's no batteries in it to run it, right?
Yes, I've had that experience, too.
I've been a parent.
That was, that's, yeah.
Won't be that hairy.
If you would, you know, with the issue areas that are particularly important to you, how you're represented as a council, how you're represented individually with your bios, photos, I'd love to hear about what you'd like to see there. Some of those things, we have to triage a little bit, though there will be some items that come at us that are links we have to address right away. But if we broadly have the content right that has migrated over from the existing site to this new site, we can make changes to that, but I might have to just put it on the calendar a little bit further down the list as we try and deal with all of this. If you have topic areas that are really important to you, I'd like to hear about that as well and how we're telling that story. So, for example, with the financial center that we're building for this new site, in an effort to make sure we continue to provide great information, accurate information, and very up to date, and just a clear access to all of the financial position of the city and the choices that the council has made on spending and on levies, we are creating this new single hub, whereas before, a lot of that information was locked up in some PDFs and kind of dispersed in some other spots. We have now created a hub where people can find all different types of information about the finances of the city. That will be something we continue to build out. Water, stormwater, streets would all also be examples of that. The last thing I'll mention, when you get in, you'll notice that our library page and our parks pages look and feel like they're their own sites. There are a lot of similarities. They're all consistent with the Clive brand, and there are design elements that are same between the city pages and then the parks and library pages. But we really wanted to create a homepage effect for those sites because they are overwhelmingly where most of the traffic to our domain, cityofclive.com, goes. And most people are getting there through organic search, just up in their, in their address bar, typing it and going straight to those spots. And so, in an interest of connecting them quickly with the knowledge and the services and the calendar that they wanted to see when they're thinking library or thinking parks, we said, let's create a real homepage experience for those people, and I think we've accomplished that. The team, I can't say it enough, actually, my colleague Doug today was asking me, pleading with me, can I get my staff back, right? Because they've been putting so much time into getting these pages looking great and improving the functionality. And I am just so grateful for the work that they put in because I know it's been hard, and I know it's been a lot of time, and that we'll continue to need to put time into it. But when you, I'd ask you, as you meet those people who have been doing that primary lifting on my, on the web team, give them a pat on the back and thank them, because they have really done something special that's gonna benefit the city for a long time, all the residents and businesses.
Well, Pete, thanks. We can't wait to have it cut over and get started, and it's been a long time coming. So, appreciate the great work there, and thanks for the update. Questions for Pete, counsel? Thank you. Ted?
Only thing I have is, last time, when I gave my report, it was brought up about the model bicycle ordinance for the, for the metro. So, with the policy meeting, or the policy committee for MPO met last week, and I, I checked in with the MPO leadership on that, and it's on hold at the MPO until the MAC kind of flushes out what they're gonna do. So, there's nothing being done at the MPO at this time with it, until they see what the MAC does.
Thanks, Ted.
That's it.
John, no pressure. All right, Eric?
Sure. Last week, attended the Catch Des Moines Board Meeting. A couple of quick items here. Pittman Company presented the 2018-19 audit. It was a, it was a clean audit, so it's always good news. Our bid team went out to Indianapolis, and we're bidding on the NCAA for the 2023-26 bid cycle. So, we've had some great luck with the NCAA, the last two here, and things look positive. But again, it's always a bidding cycle, and, and we feel like we're in pretty good shape moving forward to that. So, that's, that's a good thing right here. Marketing teams, we talked before, Des Moines, yes, the city, city is not. We've seen some really cool stuff with that. Impressions are up 6% to gold. Also, we've seen two national articles, one in the Washington Post about Des Moines, and the other Wine Enthusiasts about Des Moines, right there. So, a couple of cool things, getting a lot of traction with this marketing campaign right there. We did do alternate policy, we revised, city managers know the alternative. Matt is for, for, if I'm unable to attend, so that's the automatically deliver proxy votes right there. New development was discussed, and part of that's the idea of the soccer, the county soccer complex and the public market, Catch Des Moines involvement with that, too, and what, what they want to do with that. But these are some things that have a direct impact in the greater Des Moines area. Also, really, the need for the downtown Skywalk security right there. So, that's a big deal. You know, it's hard to attract people to downtown Des Moines when you haven't, some of these incidents spread out in the paper. So, I know the Great Des Moines Partnership and Catch Des Moines and the Des Moines PD are working diligently, trying to, trying to figure that out. And then, last but not least, the presentation on the Destination Master Plan. I know Matt had given some input on that, and they're continuing to work forward with that as for a long-term strategic planning for Catch Des Moines, the City of Des Moines, and when that's completed, we'll have that for the council right there.
Lots going on, for sure. Questions for Eric? Okay, thanks, Eric. John, and it's-
No, it's okay.
Susan? Susan?
I really enjoyed attending the community development picnic along the Greenbelt Trail. Thank you very much for that. This morning, the Grants Committee met for Clive Community Foundation. And I think it's notable that we're recommending that about 75% of the available funds be awarded for grant requests because part of the interest is in garnering some resources to support some major projects in Clive, including the Triad projects. So that was a definite discussion point.
How many applications total?
There were initially 20, and then one was eliminated, and then another one had some issues. So we really evaluated between 18. And most of them are receiving something, but it was a good discussion process.
Good.
And then this afternoon, I began my process of participating in this year's Des Moines Waterworks Citizens Academy. Looks like it'll be a really good program.
Thank you, Susan. Michael?
Um, Dart, real quick, we will, I think it's John, Mayor, and me tomorrow, taxes. So we'll be participating in that.
Tomorrow Monday, you mean, right?
Is it Monday?
Monday afternoon, yeah.
Monday afternoon. Apologize. And, but that will kind of go out to the rest of the council so you can get an opportunity to comment back before we have our meeting Monday afternoon. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Madam Council, anything for the group? Matt?
Your Honor, pass this around. So Pete and I were at the ICMA conference in Nashville this previous week. And as a part of that, our firm that does the National Citizen Survey for us every other year gave us the award for the Voice of the People Award for the Built Environment. I know we had shared this with you previously, but this is recognition of the, basically, the city of Clive, our citizens, recognition and high scores for the built environment in Clive and higher, highest in the nation, out of the communities that they do the survey for. So that is the award that we received, and we'll put it next to the Built Environment Award, one that we won in 2016. So this is, continues on a good path there. So appreciated the opportunity for both Pete and I to go and do some professional development in Nashville at ICMA every year. Couple of weeks from tonight, and we'll have the CIP work session in here at 5:30. We'll have food for you all because it'll be a long night. But a lot of, a lot of things to talk about related to the CIP, the proposed CIP, and so we'll have a lot of topics to cover. But looking forward to that. A lot of strategic planning items that were included in the update that we'll be discussing that night. So looking forward to that conversation. Speaking of strategic planning, with that being adopted, just putting on the table some consideration for 2020 workshop dates, just to get that on calendars early. I'm especially looking at Councilmember McCoy and the first full week of August, August 4th, 6th, and 8th, that'd be the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday morning rotation.
My wife, every year, sorry, every year.
I thought it was the next week, though. Well, we can.
Get in trouble every week.
Well, if that doesn't work, then we can do a different one. So looking for that feedback now if we need to adjust, knowing that that's always, you know, the council dedicates a lot of time to that and being respectful and knowing that we have to work around family calendars. Just want to try to get those dates out there early and see what we can get on the calendar, whatever might work.
Give it to me one more time, Matt, if you would.
Would be that first full week of August. So the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday would be the 4th, the 6th, and the 8th. What's, oh, well, that's, you're not, but it's not, you're not meeting on one of those trades.
No staff on either side.
So we can always, we did have to move it back a couple of weeks this year just for calendars. And if we need to do that, we can do that. Just wanted to get that on the radar early and often.
Appreciate you trying to do that early, Matt. It's, August is just a difficult month.
It's always a tough month, yeah.
It's not only tough from a personal perspective, it's tough from a business perspective. Businesses are doing outings, businesses are doing customer appreciations, things like that. It's just the time to do that. So it's, it makes it a little bit of a challenge. We might have to start looking at September, perhaps, maybe some year.
It's not something that the council desires. We can always relook at, relook at the schedule if needed.
Anyway, well, let's look at these and let's see how we do. Did you have?
Just the last thing that I had is legislative priorities. I know I've shared drafts of that. I've gotten a few comments back on that. Just want to see if there was any other, I'll resend it tomorrow, my weekly update, along with the DART talking points that Michael referred to. Just if you have any comments on that, I plan on bringing that back to you at your next regular meeting in November for your consideration and adoption. The mayor and I will be sitting down with Senator Schneider next week, end of next week, just a normal get-together that we have, just talking about interim things and what's coming up for the legislative session. So my hope would be is just, I'm going to just lay it out that this is draft at this point in terms of priorities, not anticipating any significant changes as you saw from the draft that I sent out unless the council desires any significant changes. But maybe some more firmer wording around water quality in Iowa and how those could support some of our Triad projects is something that's under consideration. That's been brought up before because that seems like there's more momentum there for this upcoming legislative session. But some things for the council to think about, and we'll bring that back at your next regular meeting. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Matt. Questions, Council?
Elections are coming up.
They are. They are. We have, I have two signs in my yard.
Get out and vote.
I see a lot of Weaver signs out there.
I don't know how that happens.
You must have had Klein helping you out.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Boys are good at that.
Good, okay. Anything else for Matt, Council? Okay, very good. Thank you. Matthew, any correspondence other than what we already have? Good, thank you very much. Council, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing further, we're going to adjourn at 6:56.